No, I'm thrilled if it works out.
Yeah, well.
I'm thrilled.
So it is.
And it works out?
Yeah, anyway, I wanted to give you that.
Let's go. We all live? We live, Justin? All right. And welcome to the City of Chester deliberative meeting for Monday, July 21st, 2025. Present up here are everyone except Council Lady West, who's joining by phone, I believe?
Correct.
All right, so that means we're all here. Mr. Solicitor?
Thank you, Your Honor. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the City of Chester deliberative meeting for Monday, July 21st, 2025. There are no ordinances on the agenda. The following resolutions will be before counsel for final passage on Wednesday. Resolution 84, authorize the establishment of an eligibility civil service list for the position of patrol officer in the Chester Police Department. Resolution 85, authorize a word of bids for the construction of the Public Works Facility ARPA, A-R-P-A, project number 27. Resolution 86, authorize extension of the service contract and its amendment with SCM Management LLC to provide safety advocates for the 2025-2026 academic year. Resolution 87, authorize the engagement of EJM Advisory Firm LLC to provide ongoing analysis of the Chester Police Department operations and ad hoc advisory services for a 12-month period. Resolution 88, authorize establishing procedures and adopting policies to address the receipt, retention, requests, responses, and dissemination of information concerning confidential security information received by the City of Chester from a public utility. That would conclude the list, except for an announcement that there was an executive session prior to this meeting.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from counsel? Questions, comments?
Just clarity on Resolution 84.
Resolution 84, Chief, what can you tell us?
That's a resolution that authorizes advertising to begin the process of establishing a police civil service eligibility list. So that's the first step in the process to develop a new list that we would use to hire additional police officers going forward.
Got you. Thank you. I just wanted more clarification for the community, that's all. I know that language could have been a little confusing.
I have a question on R-87. To authorize the engagement of EJM Advisory Firm to provide an ongoing analysis of Chester Police Department operation, what does that consist of?
So, good afternoon, Councilwoman Vijay Kapoor, receiver. So with this, over the past year, what we have been working, what EJM has been doing on behalf of the city is analyzing police staffing data. And what they do is they take the raw data that is sent to them from the police department in terms of the police officers' hours worked based on the different shifts. And it allows us to look very quickly over the, over periods to see how many officers are essentially on shift, which is, which is one of our key concerns, a key, a key staff, police officer staffing is obviously one of the, one of the key concerns that we've had. So what has happened is, over the past couple, over the last year, those services were paid for by, from my contract when I was the chief of staff to the receiver. I'm no longer, obviously, the chief of staff to the receiver. I'm the receiver and now a state employee, and so my contract has, has gone away. And so what this is, is for $1,000 a month for a retainer for EJM to continue to provide that analysis. One other thing, just council, councilwoman. I also, if you're looking for an example of what was, what they do, so in the email that I sent to counsel last week, there was an email I sent on Wednesday, the 16th, at 6:57 PM. I had two attachments to that email. One was the proposal, which I think is here, and the other was an example of a review of a pay period where they did that analysis. So, so I have a black and white copy here that I could, I could provide to you.
I'm just thinking, I thought it was, was something else and just wanted to have a little bit more clarity. Was it just about the police department's operation or did it have something to do with accountability with officers or anything like that?
No, it is, it is strictly looking at officer, essentially staffing, that's strictly looking at that.
Just staffing?
Yes, ma'am.
And it's $4,000 a month to do that?
No, it's, it's $1,000 a month.
$1,000, I'm sorry, $1,000 a month?
Correct.
So essentially just providing data to the police department and to operations?
It is analyzing data, it's analyzing raw data to the police department and to, and to the city, which will help us understand what the staffing arrangement is.
Okay. And as you, as you said, it's, my understanding that the state paid for this previous through your contract. Is there a reason why the state can't pay for this? Or why the state can't contract this company and not come out of the city coffers, but out of the state coffers?
Well, I mean, to be fair, this is actually mostly a, 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 a contract that benefits the city and the city operations. And the state paying for it was something that, that I think was an important thing to do, to get it off the ground and prove it. The answer is, we don't have that money anymore to be able to pay for that, which is why, again, I think it's an important thing to do, to have for the city, so we understand how many officers we have on the street, so we know what the staffing levels are and what the trends are. And that, again, is, is why we're bringing it forward here to request that the city do it.
When you say, "We don't have the money anymore," the state don't have the money anymore?
Because the contract went away, that's correct.
You don't have the state's money anymore.
The, for the, okay, so the state's chief of staff contract went away?
Correct.
Okay, so essentially the state is saving money because they're not paying the, for chief of staff anymore. So it, has there been any thought about going to the state and say, "Hey, this was in the previous contract with the former chief of staff. Can you guys continue to pay for this contract for this company?" Being as though the city is short on cash, and I know we're projected to hit a cliff, as you said before, for next year. And so we're, I'm assuming the goal is to try to save as much money as we can and not take on any additional expenses. And so with that being said, is it, are we able to go to the state and say, "Hey, can you guys foot this contract? Because you did it previously with the chief of staff contract."
Yeah, so.
Has that been a conversation?
It, given, given the where, given where the state budget is right now, it hasn't been a conversation only because it's, it's, it's not going to be, I mean, it's not going to happen, right? So, you know, what the state has done over the last year was essentially foot the bill when it, when it didn't necessarily have to. This is mostly an operational matter that, that, that is, that benefits the city. So in some respects, you may be saying the state is saving money. The state may have been looking at this and saying, "We're spending money on something maybe we, we didn't have to spend it on." So, so again, for the value of it, though, for, for, for the $1,000 a month here that, that provides a snapshot and now almost a year period where we're able to look at trends, especially by somebody who, who has worked in police staffing, who worked in the Baltimore Police Department, I think would, would, again, would, would benefit all of us and benefit the city to understand, again, you know, how many officers we have on the street, what are the trends we're seeing in there, and, and to be able to look at that over, you know, over more than just like a, a per-pay period, period. So, so we, so Councilwoman West, the question was, have we gotten any reports? So, so we, the commissioner and I get a report every two weeks from EJM. That is, that is reviewed. So the answer is yes, and we, we've been getting that since, I believe, June of last year. Well, I mean, should counsel want to review any of that data, we'd be, we'd be happy to provide it. If there's the Public Safety Committee, this would be a good opportunity to, to provide that analysis to that committee. But we have no issue with, with sharing it.
My question is, so there's no one inside of the police department themselves that could have handled the daily operations and the different trends?
I'm about to say. I could speak to that. The answer's no.
Okay.
Not, not for this level of analysis that they do. This, this is extremely helpful data. When you actually look at it and spend a little time with it, you look at it and you can see the overtime, you can see trends in overtime, you can see who's getting the overtime, you can see, there, there is so much data in here that from a management tool point of view, it's extremely helpful.
Well, I still ask because there'll, there'll be a member of our community asking the same question, so I had to ask.
And my answer would still be the same.
Okay.
Mr. Kapoor, my question is, do you, do you see this, this firm as something the City of Chester will be pursuing and keeping going forward for years to come?
So I think over the next 12 months, it will be helpful to have. I think after that, it's something that, that, that we can, we can look at and do. Again, I, I wouldn't be bringing something to, I wouldn't be bringing something to ask counsel to spend money on if, if I didn't think it was, it was important to do, right? Simply for the same questions that you all are going to be getting from the public as well, right? It's, this is probably the first time I'm sitting in front of you and, and asking you all to do this. So, but, but Councilman, I think, I think over the next 12 months, we want to take a look at it. You know, clearly staffing is a significant, it's important, right? Not just from the perspective of the community, but also for the officers. And as, as Chief Moore said, you know, if you look at that data, and again, it's, it's better to look at it in color. I'm sorry, I just, I don't have a colored printer, but it helps you, again, kind of see by officer, how many hours are worked, and it's, it's broken out by platoon, and, and you really can see sort of trends within that platoon, again, in terms of staffing, how many people are, are having to be brought on because of overtime, you know, how many are, are out, you know, again, from, from that level of detail, to me, I, I think it's a, it's, it's certainly very helpful from, from, from an operational end.
And the additional value that you have is, since this started last year, now you're starting to get into that time period where you have some year-over-year comparisons. So you can start looking at July of 2025 versus July of 2024. So you, you start looking at those, those trend lines, and that, that really becomes a useful management tool.
Any other questions?
Thank you. While you're there.
Sure.
88.
Yes, sir.
And I know you did send an email explaining that, and I think you kind of answered my questions that I had at the previous council meeting in reference to, you know, it, from the beginning, it kind of looked like that we would be hiding information or would be some kind of information, you know, with the sale of the water authority or any of the water assets in the city, if someone from the public wanted to come here and get that information, they would be told, you know, pretty much, "No, we can't give you that information." But this resolution is not that.
Correct. So, so, so what this resolution is, to be clear, so this is resolution number 88, which authorizes establishing procedures and adopting policies to address the receipt, retention, requests, responses, and dissemination of public information containing confidential security information received by the City of Chester from a public utility. So, so essentially, under the law, there are, there is certain information that is deemed confidential security information as it relates to public utilities. This is information that, that one, that is important to be kept sort of protected for concerns about terrorism and other sorts of things. And so there are prohibitions of releasing that information publicly. What is important, and, and there are penalties, including misdemeanors, for, for mishandling that type of information. And so what this is, is, we, we understood, right, because we're going through the, through the, through the monetization process, that the City of Chester did not have a policy to deal with confidential security information. We just, we didn't have a formal policy to do it. And so for both the protection of the public utilities, as well as for the protection of our employees, what you have before you is a process that is nearly word-for-word the process that the Pennsylvania Public Utility Commission uses when it deals with confidential security information. Now, it is very unlikely that any Chester city employee is going to have confidential security information. I just want to be clear about that. Like, like, this is, this is not something, you know, again, for the public, thinking that, that, you know, the city is getting these kinds of documents from the CWA. I want to be very clear about that. Like, like, it is my understanding that the city does not have any confidential security information here. But what this is, is a process, so that, and where the process, the, sort of the way the process generally works is that if the city receives what's deemed confidential security information, which is defined in the statute, so that's, that's specific information that is defined in the statute, the public utility from whom the city gets it has to designate that it's confidential security information. Like, they got to say it, right? We just, we don't guess, right? Our employees don't guess. And then, you know, we, we will maintain that, we as the city, or the, excuse me, the city would maintain this, and in the event that a right-to-know request is made, or someone from the public comes out, it basically creates the process by which that is handled, up to and including on the city's end needing to seek a protective order from a court in the event that there's litigation around it. So that's what this is about. It's not about hiding information. If it's public information, that this doesn't, this isn't a shield against the right-to-know request. Certainly, we want to be transparent about all of that, but with respect to, this is really all about handling specific, sensitive confidential security information.
And I, I just wanted to make sure that our public, if they did have any questions in reference to any of the utility authorities or companies in Chester, they would still be able to submit right-to-know requests and be able to get those questions answered with the exception. And I'm not sure, I don't know if it's been really defined of what the confidential information is. And also, will our clerk, our city clerk and our assistant city clerk, will they be trained on what is deemed confidential and what is not, and what they can, what information they can give through a right-to-know request and what they can't? Is there going to be some kind of training in place for that? Okay.
That, that's correct. And what I'll say, Councilman, too, as well, is part of the process here is actually to go through the solicitor's office. That's, that, that's part of the process of dealing with that. And confidential security information, again, just, just so everybody knows, is, that is specifically defined in the, in the resolution as well as in the act. It is defined in Section 2 of Act 156, 35 PS, 2141.2. Now, I know it doesn't mean much for this group here, but the solicitor's office is obviously going to know what that is. And also, I want to be very clear, too. In the event that the city receives confidential security information, it is, it is the obligation of the public utility to mark it as confidential security information. So, so if it's coming to us, right, it should be marked as such for them to comply with the regulations.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. It does. So, so, so there is a speci, so counsel, the question for, for Councilwoman West was, does that include other authorities as well? And, and again, what I'll say here is, public utility is specifically defined, the term as defined in Section 2 of Act 156. So again, it's, 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 it's essentially compliance with the law, Councilwoman, for what, what the law defines as, as a public utility.
Any other questions, comments, counsel? Anyone in, there's more?
Safe corridor.
Counsel, I've, Resolution 86 is, we have representatives here from SES, SCM Management to answer any questions you might have regarding the safety advocates, which is really crossing guards for the upcoming school year, which starts, you know, middle of August, end of August, through next, next school year.
If we don't have any questions, you guys can stay right there. Do we have any questions?
You have, the handout that I gave you includes the, the locations as well as the, the cost of, of the contract with the line item breakdown.
I just have one comment. The location sheet seems to have just a little more detail than the last one I saw. We see the, the, instead of seeing addresses listed twice, we're seeing that those few corners that have two crossing guards, and I see Ninth and Tillman is on this sheet, which wasn't on the last one. Was that an add-on, or was that a?
When, when I met with Representative of SCM, there were two locations that weren't included in the original contract, and then there were four additional sites that were added February of this past year. There were two additional sites that they've been staffing that weren't even in the original contract. So we really have 34 crossing guards at 30 locations throughout the city.
I do have one question, if one of you can come to the mic. In the event that a crossing guard gets sick, can't, can't show up, do you have, like, standby substitutes or how do you manage that?
So we manage crossing guards who call out through our operations manager. So we have someone who starts driving around the city approximately 30 to 15 minutes before the start of the official shift. And that person drives around and we have a group with me, right, so that that person can communicate with the team, like, "Hey, this person isn't on, on post." So we start to make phone calls when we notice, right, when we're getting close to 7 o'clock, that the person is on, isn't, is not on post. If that person doesn't show up by like 7:05, then that operations manager or some other operations manager then staffs the missing, you know, the person who's missing from their post.
So do you have people on the bench?
Yes.
Is what I'm asking.
Sorry, yes.
Are we paying for those, too, or we're just?
So we make sure that the daily numbers do not exceed what's in the contract.
Okay, yeah, that's probably the way I should have asked. Okay, thanks.
Tom, is this sheet different from the last sheet, the sheet that we had last week?
There, very little has changed. There's some additional, some lines under the comments section, but the value of this contract is the same value that we discussed previously, which is roughly just about $40,000 less than the first year of the contract.
Anything else?
I know there were some concerns in, that they brought up last week. Were those concerns addressed?
There was some additional detail on the spreadsheet that you'll see under the event expenses, where indicated what the, what the cost would be. For example, what are the monthly PD events? That, that was included in there. And if you have any questions, they're here to answer those specific questions.
I can't remember what the, I didn't have any, but I know there was questions.
Yeah.
So I just wasn't sure of those.
I'm, I'm very comfortable with the details. If there's any, if there's any training that's provided, they don't get a lump sum. They only, they only get to invoice us for actual services rendered. So.
Correct.
So although you have a value of a contract, this will be a not-to-exceed contract. So unless they provide proper, and we've had this conversation, so unless they provide the documentation and it cuts mustard with us, they don't get reimbursed. So if there's, if there are things in the first year of the contract under the event expenses that were never billed, and therefore that was, that was never a charge against the city's contract. So, so although the value of this will be the $471,000 that we're estimating, that's the not-to-exceed amount. The, the actual expenses might actually be less than that.
Be less, right.
Correct.
Because last year it was less, but they didn't exceed the $510,000 that was original.
Correct, correct. So even with that, we're still $40,000 less than what the first year of the contract with the addendum that was, that was approved by counsel back in February.
And now, did we add any additional sites from last week's sheet?
The two, the two sites that were, that were added were.
Besides Ninth and Tillman.
The last two on the list on page two, those were two sites that were, that were not in the contract, but they've presently been staffing that for the duration of the last school year.
Okay. Because Carlin wasn't on the list, but we know it was crossing guards.
Correct, correct.
Yes.
Carlin as well as Ninth and Tillman.
Okay. And so, okay, 34 crossing guards at 30 locations, but some of them have two. Now, is the floaters accounted for in the budget as well?
The short answer is yes.
Okay.
Right? So we, I, I do the invoicing. I, I never submit more timesheets, right, than what's in the contract. So if and when we do have a floater, right, I make sure to include their timesheet in place of.
Okay.
Right? So like, let's say we have crossing guard A, they work Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. Cool. So now their timesheet says Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. Then we have the floater that subs in for them for Thursday and Friday. You see what I'm saying? So I make sure that in the case that, that we do have floaters, it doesn't impact the bottom line.
Thank you.
And once again, we're only paying for the actual hours worked.
Right.
Yep.
So I noticed from the last meeting that we had, we were talking about the school safety trainings, workforce development, and the community networking events. That's the three areas that we were talking about. And so I see now that it's a detailed explanation of where that money is going to be spent towards, such as the marketing materials, the resume building, professional communication, and so on and so forth. But I, I do know that those three things were asked about, and I'm glad to see that they are listed so that we know what's, what trainings are taking place.
Yep.
For the employees.
Yep. I also do want to share that we provide monthly professional development to our crossing guards in an attempt to upskill them, right, with 21st century skills. Some people might minimize the impact of our crossing guards and saying, "Oh, it's an easy job. You just cross kids." Well, that's disrespectful. Our crossing guards in any municipality are the first line, right, of eyes, adult eyes and ears, once our children leave their homes. So that's one. Two, we pay our crossing guards for coming to monthly PD. And so when you're looking at these numbers, please know that we compensate, right? We compensate them for their time, which helps to build morale, which then makes, helps to make sure that they're on post every day, right? How you treat people is reflected in how they work and how they approach the work. And so we try to treat all of our crossing guards with the utmost dignity and respect so that we can keep a high attendance rate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That, that's correct, Councilwoman.
All right. Any other questions or comments for safe corridors?
Thank you.
I just want to acknowledge the fact that you guys are, you know, best in class, and it's evidenced by the fact that you're teaching others how to do this right. So I did see that you guys are really stretching out and you're around the county, helping other municipalities.
Thank you.
We're proud to have you here in Chester.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Where it all began.
Where it all began. Thank you so much.
You're doing an amazing job protecting our kids.
Thank you. Just to wrap up my time here at the microphone, we are well underway in planning the county's first crossing guard symposium. So it's planned for September 13th. It's going to be held at Delaware County Community College. So we're using, right, a, a local community, you know, participant partner, and every crossing guard throughout the county will be in attendance. We're using this as an opportunity to centralize training, and we're also pushing the county to adopt a central policy, right, so that all crossing guards throughout the county are held to the same expectations. So we want to just, you know, formally invite any member of counsel, as well as the public, you know, to take a peek in and see the amazing work that we're doing and that we're attempting to do county-wide.
That's what I was trying to say.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments from those of you in the audience? Go right ahead.
Okay. What I wanted, I got, I'm getting a lot of complaints about the, from, on West 7th Street, from Welch to Melrose. I believe that's supposed to be located towards Melrose Avenue. And I got a complaint, like, they're getting around the place that trucks and other, like, delivery persons and what have you, they're coming up the wrong way on West 7th Street. So I believe, is Andrew, Andrew Payton? So I believe, is Andrew, Andrew Plankton?
Yes.
Um, we, we need to have, look at that, and have some runway signs put on West Seventh Street, from, again, from Welsh Street over to Melrose Avenue, you know, on a children who are going to the Boys and Girls Club for camp, before and after school programs, and it's dangerous. One of the staff members at the Boys and Girls Club has asked the delivery person whether or not they, you know, which way to take GPS now, to come, and on the GPS, I believe it's letting them come away from Melrose towards Welsh Street, or maybe that's something, I don't know, false records will work in that, or someone intended because we have to get it to learn that, or something, whatever they do, to make sure that people travel the right way.
Councilwoman Andrews here, so he'll, he'll go onsite, and we'll make sure we've got well-placed, you know, "Do not enter" signs, or "one-way" signs.
All right, thank you. All right. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Meeting adjourned. I can't have a go.
I'll call you back, okay?
Okay, great. Thanks.